Good evening. Welcome to the Fairbanks North Star Borough School District's regular school board meeting. Today is Tuesday, September the 19th, and we are starting at 6:00 PM. The school board would like to take this moment to respectfully acknowledge that we are residing on the traditional land of the Dene people. Our mission is to provide an excellent equitable education in a safe supportive environment so that all students will succeed and contribute to a diverse and changing society. Ms. Rich- oh, would you please stand, and Ms. Marotti will lead us in the pledge?
(Inaudible)
Ms. Richardson, would you please call the row?
Here.
Colonel Cole is excused. Mr. Lopez?
Here.
Mrs. Burnett?
Here.
Mrs. Matheson?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Mrs. Hardy?
Here.
Ms. Marotti?
Here.
Mr. Doran?
Here.
Mrs. Sanderson?
Here.
Thank you, the board has a quorum.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome you, so the first thing that we have on our agenda this evening is a 2023 ASA First National Bank Alaska Track and Field State Champions. Students from West Valley High School, Ben Ielson Jr., Senior High, Hutchison High School place first in several events. West Valley Coach Gribas, Ben Ielson's Athletic Director of Victoria Drops, and Hutchison Coach Merrick will make the presentations.
So I'm pleased to come up here and talk about Alex. So Alex is an amazing athlete. He has our school record at six foot seven inches. By the way, the state record is six foot nine inches from, I think, 2009. So Alex is only a junior. And he's a champion. Champions do well in adversity. So he did six seven at regionals. State was extremely windy. And even with a bad fall, he's the state champion this year, just like he was last year. So Alex, why don't you come up here?[266.83][266.83](Applause)
Hi guys, I am here for- oh, we're turning it back on? Hello? Okay, cool. Oh, is it loud? Okay, sorry.[367.12][367.12](Laughter) All set. I'm here on behalf of Ben Ielson to present for Nico Alvarado. Unfortunately, I have not had the pleasure of knowing him personally, but I have heard his name because he does such a great job in all of his sports. He's a very involved student. And I did try to take the time to go and talk to the coaches and the teachers that do know him. And one thing as a parent that they are confident in his abilities to succeed, for sure, without a doubt, that was across the board. And Coach Mesa specifically wanted to note that he is just very respectful and he's very dedicated and he's just a wonderful teammate and just person to have sort of on your team and works really, really hard for everything that he's achieved. So we're really proud of him. Come on up here.[414.22][414.22](Applause) We'll miss you at Ben Ielson. Here you go.
So I'm here on behalf of Zane Robinson. Zane is unfortunately not able to be here today, there was a last minute conflict, but he's a fantastic person, fantastic athlete. He has that ripe blend of humility as well as confidence. He has enough humility that he's able to be coachable and then enough confidence that when he's able to put his mind to it, he can achieve great things. I actually wasn't there at state. I was one of the assistant coaches and I bowed out of the state competition, but I have a message here from the head coach who was there, Mr. Ben Johnson. He says, "When seven foot two inch Zane walked in the first day of practice, we collectively knew there was no way he was going to win a limbo competition, so we had to find something else for him to do. However, in all seriousness, the high jump is massively technical and much like a golf swing, there are about 20 things that have to all line up to make it successful. And to watch Zane go from getting just a few of the 20 right to putting it all together at the big stage was absolute pleasure to be a part of."
Thank you. One more clap or applause for our young athletes and their accomplishments.[531.16][531.16](Applause) Right next on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda by consensus?
Move to adopt the agenda with consent items by consensus.
Next, we come upon our public comments on reports on the agenda. Public comments on reports and non-agenda items are limited to two minutes per person for a maximum of one hour. People who have signed up in advance through the school board office to testify in person or by Zoom will be called upon first, and if time remains, anyone who else is in person will be invited to testify until the one hour limit has been reached. A person testifying shall state their full name, spelling their last name, the city of residence for record. Board members may ask questions for clarification, although there is time at the end of each meeting for the school board and the superintendent comments. Some concerns may not be able to be addressed immediately as additional information may need to be gathered. So the only person I have for the sign up list is Ms. Logan? Oh, for the agenda items, okay. Is there any one wishing to come and speak at this time? I don't have anyone signed up. Seeing none, I'm going to close comment, public testimony, and move there's no one for our Borough Assembly. And which brings us to the president's report, which is mine. In this past weekend, our board got the opportunity to attend the AASB School Board Academy, where once again we were able to connect with our board members from around the state of Alaska. We were, had various breakout sessions, and it's just a time to recommit, refocus, and get recharged. We dealt with updates from the Department of Deed for this school year. We had an update on the Alaska REEDS Act. We were, continued to receive additional information of trauma engaged schools and family engagement highlights. And Executive Director Lon Garrison, he talked to us about the legislative advocacy, our role, strategies that we will need to be implementing on the behalf of our districts and around our community and around our state. We also talked about why it's important for local boards to do assessments every year to assess ourselves, our work, our progress, for improvements in just all around wellness. And now we have our elections that are wide open, possibility of having adjustments on our board. The AASB conference that will be in November will include a new member, board member onboarding session that is very much appropriate for a new board member, and it just helps you get grounded and established and put things in perspective for the work that's ahead. The other thing is, Ms. Burnett and myself will be visiting with the North Star College to check that out and to see all the great things that are going on there. And that completes my report. So we go to our superintendent for his report.
All right. Thank you, President Sanderson. Is my mic on?
It is. It's on.
Okay, I'll keep going. I'll use my teacher voice. I want to say a huge thank you to Mrs. Smith, Mrs. Hardy, and Mrs. Burnett for their work on the attendance resolution that's on the agenda this evening. I'm very pleased with the collaborative effort that was demonstrated and impressed with the resolution that was created. So thank you very much for your work on that. We're pleased to announce that the bus tracking service that I had talked about in previous board meetings went live this week. It's a great tool for parents to check bus times and see where buses are, pickup times, and approximately how late buses might be. I did want to comment on some transportation challenges that we're having. Durham did pull some TDY drivers out of Fairbanks last week. That was an unexpected move, and so we've had some challenges this week. We've had to combine some routes, and so we're monitoring that closely. I'll keep the board and the community updated if service levels need to drop, because one of the things that I'm really, one of the things that I'm passionate about is ensuring that we've got consistent service for our families. I don't want families to wake up and have to worry about whether or not a bus is going to arrive that day. And so if we have to cut service levels back, you know, for some time until we get drivers back, then we might have to make those moves. And so we're monitoring that closely, and I'll keep you updated to that situation. I did want to recognize some of our first donors to the school district this year. Donors that have donated between $1,000 and $5,000 include the Fairbanks Central Labor Council, Fairbanks Youth Sports, Joseph Byers Fund, Northern Area Aquatics, and North Pole Rotary Club. And then we also have two donations that were in between the $5,000 and $10,000 mark, Terri Spetkovsky and Barnett PTA Magnet School. So a huge thank you for those donors to the school district. Your partnership means a lot to our students and the staff here in the district. The school district launched a podcast this week. The first episode went live this morning on Spotify and YouTube, and I'm very excited about this alternative form of communication the district will have for our families and community. It goes into more detail than what a typical webpage or social media post or even just a letter out to families could do. It's a long form type of communication, and so I look forward to highlighting the great things that are happening in our district as well as diving deep into different issues such as the Alaska REEDS Act, showing what things we do with our Alaska Native education community and different things like that. And so if you have ideas or if you want different people on the podcast, let me know. We are open to suggestions, and we have a great list coming up and look forward to sharing those episodes with you. This is the last nudge for our communications survey. You'll hear a little bit more about the communications audit that we'll have here shortly. We have a survey out to gauge how we're doing communicating with families and stakeholders. And so if you do have 10 minutes to spare and you haven't filled out the communications survey, we would love for you to do so. The link to that communications survey is on our website on one of the slides, and that survey closes tomorrow. And we're specifically asking more staff to fill out the survey. We haven't got as high as percentage as we would like there. Of course, we want to continue to hear from our families and community members as well. And then lastly, I'd just like to acknowledge our educators and parents and guardians for hosting so many amazing open houses and student socials as we went back to school this year. Every week, it seems like there's a new open house. They're working really hard at sharing information about the Alaska REEDS Act and the science reading, as well as just the amazing things that are happening in their schools. And so that takes a lot of time, effort, and dedication by our educators and our parents and guardians for hosting those events, and so just a huge thank you for that. And that concludes my report this evening.
Do you have a question or clarification, Mr. Doran?
Thank you, Dr. Martin, for that update. Just on the busing and with Durham, they were kind of reassuring at the beginning, not guaranteeing, but that they had several people in the pipeline, et cetera. Have they given any indication how they're replacing the TDY drivers that were pulled out? And do we, when do we reach a point where I believe there's a consequence for non fulfillment of contract or reduction of ability to do that? Is that something that's on our horizon?
Yeah, both great questions. I don't know if I'll be able to answer the question in terms of, you know, the penalties involved. I need to do a little bit more research on that contract and see what's involved there. We do have a call into senior management to see what TDY drivers will return to Fairbanks. And I would say by the end of the week, if we don't have a solid answer on whether or not we're getting additional drivers, then we'll make some service changes at that point in time. But we're pushing hard to get additional drivers. We want to have the flexibility that we had at the beginning of the year, where if drivers call out, we're still able to run consistent routes and not have, not be affected by the callouts that happen from being sick or emergencies that occur.
Thank you.
Ms. Matheson?
Thank you so much for putting together the tracking system. I need, I guess I need clarification. I thought that Durham was putting the tracking system together, and it looks like we did that. Why couldn't they do it? And how much, what's the difference in cost for us doing it versus them doing it? And do we get anything discounted because we did it instead of them?
Yeah, it's a great question and one that I had looked into, because I think that was a question earlier in the year in terms of why the district went ahead and created their own system. So in order for Durham to run their system, the way that the contract reads, to my understanding, is that we would need to roster students on buses and have a way to track them in and out of buses, and we don't currently do that. And so what that would potentially look like is each student would have their student badge, and they would need to like buzz into the bus and buzz off of the bus, and then they could provide those notifications and tracking system for us. Given our limited capacity in our transportation department, meaning three employees, we don't have the capacity to do that rostering and keep it up to date, especially given how transient of a school district we have with our students in and out over the summer months.
You have a follow up? Go ahead.
Okay, so Durham wanted to do a buzzing system. What are we doing that's different?
So what we're doing different is parents are aware of what route their students are on, and so they can go onto this live website and track the individual bus as it makes its way on, overlaid on like a Google map. And then there's also some tools at the school level, kind of a dashboard of sorts, that they can see bus times of when they will arrive at school.
Thank you.
All righty, next item on our agenda. We have no unfinished business, but we move on to our new business item. And the first one is the Education Support Staff Association ESMA Negotiated Agreement Ratification. A tentative agreement between the district and the Education Support Staff Association ESMA was reached on August 4th, 2023, and was ratified by a vote of ESMA members on September 9th, 2023. The agreement is effective from July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2026.
Motion. Move to ratify the tentative agreement between the Education Support Staff Association and the Fairbanks North Star Borough Board of Education for the period July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2026.
Second. Thank you. We have Ms. Danielle Logan. If you'll come up to the podium, state your name, spell your last name. You have two minutes to testify, and thank you.
Good evening, President Sanderson and members of the board. My name is Danielle Logan, and I reside in Fairbanks. This tentative agreement, oh, my name is Danielle Logan, L-O-G-A-N, and I reside in Fairbanks. This tentative agreement represents months of hard work between both bargaining teams. I'm thankful to Dr. Minor and the board for bringing to life, to new life to the negotiations this summer, and I'm hopeful we will continue to collaborate for the betterment of all our staff and students. I ask that you vote yes on this tentative agreement so that we can get back to the main focus that is giving our students the best education they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to testify on this item? Seeing none, is there any comments from the board? Ms. Richardson, would you please call the row? Go right ahead, Mr. Doran. You have a question?
No, I have comments.
Okay.
I just want to say I'm very, very glad to support this. Again, as I've mentioned before, to, you know, the contracts are, you know, a lot of technical stuff, but it really represents the partnership between all of us as a district to work together on behalf of kids. And I want to affirm that, you know, really appreciate the effort of both teams to come together, the time, the thought that went into that, and to pick up the opportunity this summer that, you know, we, I'm really, very pleased that Dr. Minor, one of the first things he came on was to say, this is what we need to do. But it also was saying by everybody to say, this is what we need to do. And I think this is a step forward to also where we need to go in the future, as this covers multiple years. But really, big thanks to everyone involved, to ESMA for getting it on their ratification consideration as soon as possible, and the membership acting upon it. So it's a pleasure to say yes on this.
Ms. Richardson, would you please call for the vote?
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Colonel Alvarado?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Matheson?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanderson?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carried.
All right, thank you. Next item on our agenda is Board Member April Smith is asking the school board to seek approval from the Department of Education and Early Development Commissioner in order for her daughter Olivia Smith to be hired by the district as a substitute for various positions at the district efficient, effective upon, effective upon and only if approved by the Commissioner of Education. School Board Policy 524 Nepotism states members of the immediate family of a board member shall not be employed by the district except upon written approval by the State Commissioner of Education AS 14-14. May I have a motion?
Move to request written approval from the Department of Education and Early Development as specified in AS 1414140 to hire Olivia Smith, school board member, April Smith's daughter, as a substitute for various positions at the district contingent upon the written approval of the Commissioner of Education.
Second. Are there anybody in the audience who'd like to testify?
Ms. Sanderson, I'd like to declare a conflict of interest and excuse myself from the board.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
On what basis?[1611.63][1611.63](Laughter)
If there's someone who'd like to testify on this item.
Flora Roddy, Fairbanks, Alaska. I am in favor of this motion. At previous school boards' meetings, when I've gotten to hear young Ms. Smith give her comments, she's very composed for her age. She asks great questions. I think she will be an asset to the district. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Anyone else? Back to the board, Mr. Doran, Ms. Burnett.
I just want to say, again, I'll be very much in favor of this, and it's nice to watch our students come and help. And again, especially in this capacity as a substitute, that's a challenge and a calling of its own that makes a real difference for our students, our staff, our schools, and so it's nice to see this move forward.
I just wanted to reiterate those comments from Mr. Doran. I will be proud to support this. I think Olivia, Ms. Smith will be a very welcomed member here at our district, and I look forward to seeing her accomplishments as a substitute and maybe even further.
Ms. Hardy?
Yeah, I'd like to echo that. I was very excited to see this on the agenda. I think it's clear we all very much adore Ms. Smith and everything that she has shared with our district, and I look forward in a few years when she does her internship and hopefully one day works for us.
Ditto that. Ms. Richardson, would you please call for the vote?
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Colonel Alvarado?
Yes.
Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett?
Absolutely, yes.
Mrs. Matheson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanderson?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carried.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is Resolution 2024-06 Attendance Awareness Month. Resolution 2020, Resolution 2024-06 recognizes October 2023 as the Attendance Awareness Month and encourages all and encourages all schools to participate in an Attendance Awareness Month activities and to make attendance a priority throughout the academic year. Motion?
Move to approve Resolution 2024-06, Attendance Awareness Month.
Second.
Ms. Burnett, I'm sorry. Yeah, would you please read the resolution?
Fairbanks North Star Borough Board of Education, Resolution 2024-06, Establishing October as Attendance Awareness Month in Schools. Whereas attendance has been proven to be one of the most powerful predictors of academic achievement and can have dramatic impact on key milestones, including third grade reading, ninth grade achievement, high school graduation and life success. And whereas chronic absenteeism, defined as missing 10% or more of school days, has been shown to have detrimental effects on students' learning outcomes and long-term educational prospects. And whereas the goal of an Attendance Awareness Resolution is not to promote or insist on perfect attendance, but rather focus on good or improved attendance and the correlation between regular school attendance and positive lifelong student outcomes. And whereas there are legitimate reasons for excused absences, including mental health or illness, this resolution is not meant to minimize the health challenges many families face when it comes to regular school attendance. And whereas improved attendance rates contribute to a positive school culture and enhance the learning environment for all students. And whereas recognizing the importance of promoting regular school attendance is essential for fostering a culture of responsibility and commitment to education. And whereas designating a specific month to focus on attendance awareness will provide schools with an opportunity to engage students, parents, educators, and the community in addressing and mitigating barriers to regular school attendance. And whereas the district will continue partnering with community organizations, local businesses, and other stakeholders to promote attendance awareness and provide resources to families. And whereas schools will be encouraged to implement special programs, events, and activities to educate students and parents about the importance of regular school attendance. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the Fairbanks North Star Borough School District Board of Education, hereby establish the month of October as Attendance Awareness Month in our schools. The Fairbanks North Star Borough School District through the school board encourages all schools to participate in Attendance Awareness Month activities and to make attendance a priority throughout the academic year.
All right, could we call for the vote? Did we do that already? Do we have any discussions from the audience about the resolution? Do we have any comments from the board? Ms. Burnett?
I just want to thank Dr. Minor for asking us to actually come up with this. Attendance is actually very important, and it was awesome to work with Ms. Smith and Ms. Hardy to come up with this resolution. And so I'd be very proud to support this. Thank you.
Mr. Doran?
Just wanted to say that I appreciate the positive tone on the attendance. And I think it recognizes the issues that are there for students and families that they face. The efforts by principals and teachers and support staff at the school level to make it a welcoming place for students to come. And that this is really very, very timely for us to be talking about attendance. But I think it underscores that partnership that schools and families work together in the things they do to help support their students.
Seeing no further comments. Do we take the vote? Okay. The next report... Oh, Ms. Richardson, please call for the vote.
Colonel Alvarado?
Yes.
Mr. Lopez?
Yes.
Mrs. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Mrs. Matheson?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanderson?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carried.
Thank you. This brings us to our information and reports. And the Communication Audit Report. Rebecca Herbie, Executive Director of Communications, will provide information on the NSPRA Audit Report that will be presented later in the year. Ms. Herbie, take it away.
All right, let's see if it works here. Hold for a second. There we go. Hello, my name is Rebecca Herbie. I'm the Executive Director of Communications, and I'm here to talk to you about the Enspra Communication Audit. So let's start with what is Enspra? Enspra stands for National School Public Relations Association, and they have been around since the 1930s. They are essentially experts in everything communications-related when it comes to the K-12 world. It's an organization I've been a part of for the last nine years I've been with the district. And they have a lot of resources, professional development conferences that are extremely helpful, full of great information. And then they also offer this communications audit. So the communication audit is something we have done previously. This will be our third time having the audit. We'd had one in 2011 and then in 2017. So roughly every six-ish years, we've had this audit done. The audit is a chance to essentially have a comprehensive analysis of the effectiveness of our communication. And it is looking at the overall communication of the district and schools. So it's not specifically an audit of my department. They take a really broad overall look at the district as a whole and do an audit on that. Though they will, of course, look in depth at our communications department as well. And one benefit to the audit is that they also come up with strategies for how we can improve and then action items of how to make those strategies happen, recommendations happen. So it's something that the previous audits that we've had, the recommendations they've given us have shaped like what our communications has looked like for future years. So the why of this audit, because we've had one previously, you know, we have, or we've had a couple previously now, it gives us a chance to, over time, see how the district is doing and how schools and districts are communicating. Where are we improving, or where are we improving? Where could we, where there's still room for improvement? And it helps make sure, because we do have a small communications department, that we're using our resources as effectively as we can. And so it's a chance to really have that in-depth, deep dive of communications. So our auditor is Kelly Vance. So pretty much everyone involved in Enspra has some background in communications in K-12. Kelly specifically actually is what they call... Oh my gosh, my mind just went blank. But essentially, she is working. So she works for Enspra as an auditor, and she is also the Chief Communications Officer for the Clovis Unified School District. And they have 43 schools and 40,000 students. So we're being audited. Our auditor is someone who is still working in the field, has many years of experience, and then is also working with districts across the country and seeing what's out there and how they're doing and where the best practices are. So what's involved in this audit? They essentially do research on our district to be able to give us a comprehensive report. They do quantitative research and qualitative research. The quantitative research has already begun. That is the survey that is out now and is closing tomorrow. And this is actually new since we had this audit done previously. This is, I'm not sure exactly when they started it, but they didn't have this when we had the audit before. So this will be new for our district. But it's essentially a benchmark survey. So it's the same, essentially the same questions every district gives their communities. And then when we give it to our community, we're able to compare our district to the 80 other school districts that have also done this survey. So we'll be able to see nationally where do we stand in our different communication areas that we're looking at. So the three stakeholder groups are of course our staff, our parents, our families, and communities. And so our community members. So we have one more day. That survey closes tomorrow. And we are looking pretty good on our responses. We do still need some more staff responses and a little bit more community responses. So feel free to share the survey out of your various platforms and nag people if you know staff members or community members that have not done the survey and encourage them to do that. The other research that Enspra will conduct on our school district is they do a really rigorous deep dive into our materials, our website, and our social media. I've got this sort of packet of all the things that I need to get Enspra in there. There's a big list of examples of the materials. And so I won't give you, I won't go through every single thing. But essentially, I, myself and Mr. Duval, will send them examples of school newsletters, school communication, district newsletters, district communication, internal communications, all the various links to our social media, our video platforms. We'll give them a summary of media coverage that we've had in the last year. Here's all the stories that media have covered on our school district. Here's the org chart. Here's our strategic plan. Here's our budget book. Here's descriptions of our communication jobs, descriptions that we have. The school climate survey results that we've done, as well as examples of descriptions of communication trainings we offer, the advisory councils and committees that we have as a district, business partnerships and programs we have for like our school and business partnerships. All of that stuff are just some of the examples of information that will be supplied to Enspra. And the final thing that they look at is they conduct focus groups. And so the focus groups will be happening October 16, 17, and 18. And you all are invited. You'll actually be getting an email tomorrow from me, seeing Ms. Richardson as well. The two see, basically, here are three spots. When are you available, like pick your dates? And they will break the school board up specifically into smaller groups so we're not in violation of the Open Meetings Act. And you still can have essentially confidential discussion with the auditor. So like, I'm not in on those focus groups. The auditor runs them. It's the same with the survey. The survey is given out by Enspra. We help send it out and communicate it. But I don't see those raw results. I don't know who, beyond like overall number of staff, number of parents, I don't know who fills them out. It's all like basically anonymous feedback. And so people can be as honest as they need to be. But these focus groups, we'll have 10 focus groups. They'll be made up of different staff subgroups, parents, and of course, community. They'll interview Dr. Minor. They'll interview yourselves. They'll interview the communications team. And so that, you know, the survey will give them sort of the broad look, and the focus groups give them a chance to really deep dive and get like personal experience. And so they'll talk to lots and lots of people. And then in probably early spring, we'll have our communication audit report. And for example, last year, or last time we did this, it was about a 60-page report. And when we get the report, they'll come back and they'll present the report to the board. So that's something that will happen in the spring is you'll actually be able to hear from the auditor. She will go over this report with you. You'll be able to ask any questions you may have about the process and the recommendations and findings that they have. So they'll have a summary of the findings of the survey, the focus groups, the review of the materials. They'll have many recommendations and then action items on those recommendations of how we can implement them. And so I'm very excited. This is something that, I was here for the last one, but I was just a wee communications coordinator at that time. I was not in charge of it. So, but it was very helpful. And it gives us information that shapes how we do our communications for years to come. So I'm very excited to have an outside expert come and tell us like where we're doing great, where we can improve, what's out there that we may not know of. Like, hey, these things are happening, and this is what we're seeing. So I think it'll be great information. And it's a lot of work, but it's great, it's good to have. And so there's the final report side. I believe that's everything I have. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to do my best to answer.
Ms. Doran?
Thank you for this overview. Two questions. The first one is quick. What are the dates for those focus groups?
The focus groups will be October 16, 17, and 18. And I'll be emailing the board tomorrow with the chunks of time I have available for you. Because it'll be just two to three board members. There'll be 30-minute focus groups for you guys. It'll be a little bit shorter.
Okay, thank you. And then my other question is, it just occurred as you were presenting, especially the quantitative research and the qualitative research. Is there a piece or could a piece be brought in? And I'm thinking of kind of the informal communications that happen. I'm thinking, you know, ones that start with open houses, with our PT conferences, that's more formal. But there's a piece of that during PTA meetings. But also particularly the number of contacts that are made between principals and teachers, staff, being out, helping Greek kids in the morning, opening car doors, helping, you know, connecting them. Okay, here's your ride as their kids are getting picked up, crossings. Those, there's a lot of communication that happens. And mindful, I guess, back when I was a principal, that one of our principal meetings, we did actually a very quick, three-minute brainstorm of all the things that we did in our schools for supporting discipline and as a way of conducting ourselves. And I was thinking with this one, if that could be a possibility or something to think about. You know, because at a principal's meeting perhaps, there are so many things we do that don't fall under kind of the... Or sort of below the radar, but are extremely important in terms of building those relationships and communications.
And that is something that they look at and that they consider. And that's part of why we've seen in previous recommendations. Because I'm not the person, I'm not the only person communicating for the district. Dr. Minor does. Our directors do. Our principals do. Our teachers do. There's constant communication happening between our employees and our families. And one of the previous recommendations we've had is feedback that employees were feeling like they were not getting information that they needed. They were finding out about things in the media, like in a news minor article before they were hearing it from us. And so that's just an example of feedback we have previously. And so that was a recommendation in the audit of like, we need to be better informing our employees because they're having daily touch points with our families. And if our employees aren't informed, then how can they reliably inform our families? Because our families are going to be hearing from their teacher a lot more often than they're going to be hearing from the superintendent, and they should be. So that is definitely something that's a consideration. It's all those more informal touch points that we have with families and students and how are we utilizing them to the best of our ability.
Thank you, Ms. Herbie.
Thank you.
I think that brings us to board and superintendent comments. Would go ahead and like to start with our student rep.
All right. I just wanted to acknowledge the 2023 Alaska Association of Student Government Fall Conference that is being held at West Valley from October 13th to the 15th. And want to stress the amount of time and work that West Valley has put in to making this conference happen for our district, since the last time it was held in our district was online in 2020, which really details how much has changed since then. So therefore, if any of the board is walking by West Valley that weekend, please stop by and take a look at the great examples of youth involvement in the state. And that's my report.
Thank you. Colonel Alvarado?
Thank you very much. It was very much an honor as a proud dad to have him recognized in this forum. So I thank you very much for the warmth and very, very proud for my seat made over here. And it's going to be wonderful to see Olivia in the system. She is absolutely amazing, and we're very lucky to have her in the district. And it's always great to see her faces. And thank you all for taking the time to be out here. Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
Thank you. Well, I can proudly say I saw Olivia on campus at UAF today, going for her teaching degree. So she might be sticking around this place. One comment that I had that I'd like the board and President Sanderson to consider is once again asking for the public testimony to be put back to three minutes. I think that we don't often have overwhelming numbers of testifiers. I think that we don't often have overwhelming numbers of testifiers and that it was three minutes before COVID. And I think that three minutes is appropriate for public testimony. I also wanted to encourage homeschool parents to head over to the Nordell Education Center. There's still two more days, Thursday and Friday, left where we're doing that M-class screening, which is a great opportunity for parents to get a, someone to help them check out how their kid's progressing with their reading and give them some tools and ways to help their students. And so it's, you can drop in anytime from 9:00 to 12:00 or 1:00 to 3:00 on Thursday and Friday, and it's just drop in and it's just a little 15-minute evaluation for your student and can help you have some good direction on how to help out your homeschool students. And of course, the students in the classroom will be having those evaluations in their classroom. But I wanted to encourage particularly homeschool parents to hop over there and take advantage of that. The Policy Committee will be meeting on Thursday here in this room at 5:30.
Ms. Maradi?
Thank you. I want to provide support for Ms. Smith's request to allow three minutes, if not more, for public testimony. I believe this is protocol, not policy, so it's just up to the board president to take action on that. I want to thank AASB for providing fall boardmanship for the board where we received much-needed professional development and on things like the REEDS Act, deed updates, board self-assessments, which I hope that the board will act on, board advisory committees and the importance of them, and then the legislative advocacy that boards across the state need to be involved in. I look forward to future work with AASB to include our policy work next month and our annual conference in November. I wanted to thank Dr. Minor and the admin team for facilitating innovation, such as the bus tracking system, the podcasts, and so much more. In spite of budget constraints, you are making great things happen, and it's only September. So I can't wait to see what you all come up with next. I also want to thank Dr. Minor and the negotiations team and the S's negotiations team for getting us to ratification today. I know that this is just the first step of many, and we have lots of work to do. And I'm just grateful to be able to walk that out in fidelity this year. And then I just want to remind everyone that early voting is happening now. Anyone registered to vote can vote now between now and September 28th at the Shoppers Forum that's located at 1255 Airport Way. There are also several forums this week that I hope many people are able to attend to get to know the candidates. And if you still haven't voted by October 3rd, please vote on October 3rd. And thank you, everyone, for listening tonight.
Ms. Doran?
Thank you. Couple of things. One is, I will say, yes, I'm supportive of returning to our norm of three minutes for public testimony and then making adjustments as we may have topics that we have a greater number of people who will, who are wishing to testify so we can get as many in as possible. Following the actions of the Matsu School Board regarding their student representative, I quickly started getting some questions about, what about our student rep? And I just want to say that and compliment our board and our student reps over the years. I believe Fairbanks was one of the very first districts to have a student advisory member of the board. And it's really nice to let the public know that, yes, our student representatives participate in the conversation. They get to ask questions. They get to weigh in with their comments and of course, with their advisory vote. And I think that is really significant because our bottom line interest is students, and we need to hear. And over the years, the, I think the Regional Student Council in the selection of their representative have taken that responsibility seriously. And I've watched many student reps here over the last 40 years, including, I was glad to say, my daughter was one of them. And it's always nice to have someone close to you there. So I just want to reassure the public that our student rep is an active, engaged participant. And we're glad to carry on that tradition this year with Mr. Lopez. So on the Board Budget Committee, we're welcoming several new members, certainly on all committees. We encourage community members and others to apply. Hearing from our stakeholders is really, really important. Our budget process is starting. Actually, it started right after the legislature took action and the governor took action on our budget. We go back to next spring, the exact same place where we were this spring, with no additional money. And so we're going to have some big discussions. We're going to have to advocate for an investment in our public education. So we do have our first Budget Committee meeting, October 11th, coming up very shortly, then the 25th of October. And we'll be putting, you know, several meetings together because we need to find out what the, our stakeholders feel about our budget. How do we start to put that together? Then the hard work starts for administration as they put the numbers and crunch the numbers together. And so we encourage that ongoing involvement and engagement. And last, I'm going to just reiterate what I, and I won't repeat it, but I think what President Sanderson gave as a summary of the work we were able to take part in with the AASB, the Alaska Association of School Boards, Fall Academy in Anchorage, and that the participation by board, that it's our commitment to ongoing professional development and so that we can do indeed the best job for our students and our community and education. But it was wonderful, learned a lot, got some of my thinking pushed and some clarifications that came out of that, but learned some really new things. At the same time, those affirmations are important. So appreciate the opportunity to take part in that under your leadership, Ms. Sanderson.
Thank you, Ms. Burnett.
Thank you, President Sanderson. First off, I would like to start off by also saying that I, second or third or fourth, however this goes, of the three-minute testimony, I think it's time we brought that back. I know a lot of people sometimes have more to say, and getting cut off really sucks. It really does. And I really would love to hear everything everyone has to say to the completeness that they want to say it. So I do favor the three-minute testimony. I'd also like to reiterate Mr. Doran's words about Matsu. Raul, we really appreciate you, and we've appreciated every student member that we've had on our board. Ms. Smith was absolutely amazing. And as you can tell tonight, we were so proud to be able to welcome her as a substitute. And Raul, we hope that one day maybe you'll work for us and all student representatives. There's so much that our students have to say and so much that they will give to our community. They are the future. And so to silence somebody who really has a lot to give is just, it's not okay. So your seat is safe here in Fairbanks. I promise you that. Also, big thank you, as other board members have said, to AASB. Thank you, Timmy, Lon, Tiffany, as well as Elizabeth from Deed and everybody else who was involved with that. It was a great conference to attend. As others have said, we've learned a lot. Also looking forward to visiting North Star College with President Sanderson this Friday. Looking forward to seeing all the faces and just everything they're about. I am excited as well for Friday because North Pole is taking on Lathrep. Should be a good football game, 7:00 PM, and should be a lot of fun out there. It's always great to see kids doing what they do best. Coming up on the 28th and 29th, the 28th is early dismissal parents, so make sure that's in your calendar. There is no school on the 29th. So make sure you got that worked out. Boreal Sun has some openings, if you are interested in Boreal Sun in grades 3, 5, 6, and 7. And you can find that information on Boreal Sun's website as well as our Fairbanks North Star Borough School District's Facebook page. It's all right there. And at last, I would like to finish with just a huge thank you to Dr. Minor. First off, for the direction with the attendance awareness recognition resolution. That was, thank you for the work. It was an honor to do that. And also in the light of our communications audit, just thank you for, like Ms. Maradi said, the innovation in taking our district to that next level and trying to get more out there for our families and for our parents. Since July, the communication to the board has been tenfold than what we got before. And you do a very good job at keeping us informed of everything that's going on in our district. And it's really appreciative because the questions come, and when we don't have answers, that's a really hard thing. So just thank you so much. Thank you for your innovation. If you haven't gotten a chance to check out the podcast, I did listen to the first episode. It's pretty great. Big shout out to Mrs. Gillum as well and Ms. LaPont. It's just, our district is going places, and it makes me proud. So thank you.
Ms. Matheson?
Thank you. I just wanted to remind everyone that on October 4th is our next Diversity Committee meeting. And today is the last call for the School Communications Performance Evaluation Survey. And if it's not in your email, it is on the homepage of our school district.
Ms. Hardy?
Going last means most of the stuff's already been said. I would like to echo support to return to three-minute testimonies. I would also like to thank Ms. Burnett for mentioning Boreal Sun. My students attend there, my children, and we love it. And I can't recommend the school highly enough. It's been great for my family. I would like to thank Dr. Minor and both negotiation teams for all of the work that went into settling these contracts. And I'm so grateful for your leadership and being able to start the year off on such a positive note. And I guess the last bit, I'm on the board of Kids Voting, and Kids Voting is currently accepting entries in the annual multimedia contests. This year, the theme is Vote Local: Your Right, Your Power. You can enter in one of four categories, a poster, any size, just not online paper. It can be digitally submitted. It can be small. We wanted as many entries as possible. A short format video, 60 seconds or less. Think TikTok, but it's not getting on TikTok. But that was, we were like, going to get the high school crowd. And then short essays, 100 words for younger grades, 250 for the older ones. Very manageable, great assignment for any teachers listening. There's prizes. We'll announce it at the school board meeting. And then for the poster contests, we're doing something new this year. There's going to be a first Friday event that Friday after the election. So the posters are, everything's due October 4th. And then at the Bear Gallery, we will put the posters up for public display, and the public will get to vote on what they think the winning poster will be. And then later, that poster will be turned into a sticker to be given out at Kids Voting when the kids vote in the schools. It's all nonpartisan, and I'm really glad to be a part of this program and really hoping to have lots of entries.
Thank you. And I will just end our board meeting tonight by thanking the board for their work, participation. And as we move forward, I'd like to thank Dr. Marnock for being able to get those contracts settled so that our education support professionals can continue to provide the great service that they do to our district and to our students and community. And thank you. I think that's it for me. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you, board, for your work.